Yes, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the 230th meeting of the Audit Committee, Tuesday, March the 4th, 2025. Can I get a roll call by the chair, please?
Yeah, we will note that with Trustee Watson online, the other trustees are here in the room, so everybody is present.
Can I get a motion for approval of committee meeting minutes February the 4th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
There are no comments by the chair. Good morning, Todd. Can we get the external audit presentation, Clifton Larson, Allen, LLP, please?
Thank you. My name's Andrew Zabel. I am the principal responsible for the execution of the audit services to MSD. I'm going to kind of run through about a five-minute summary of the scope of work or planning procedures that we have for the pension plan as well as the financial statement and single audits for MSD. You know, I spend all my time working with state and local government organizations, whether in Missouri or outside. I also work with a lot of utility organizations as well as energy companies as well. So working with MSD is very familiar to me, and I'm very used to the industry. If you want to go a couple slides down, I want to first kind of talk about the industry and what we're seeing from a regulatory perspective as it relates to new GASBIs. You guys follow governmental accounting standards. As a result of that, in 2022 and 2023, you guys went through some very fairly large new standards. You got a break in 2024. We have another new one this year. It's related to compensated absences. In summary, there's more guidance as to what's considered a compensated absence. Compensated absence means like vacation or other longer-term benefits that might be provided to employees. There's some other GASBIs that are on the horizon, but this one will take the most amount of MSD's time for this upcoming year. I don't expect it to be as big as the leasing standard or the software standard that was applicable for 2022 and 2023, but Mary, and this will take you and your team some time to work through. We have had initial meetings with you guys to kind of walk through the standard, give you some tools and templates. Overall, I think it should be, it'll take time to assess and understand, but ultimately I don't think it's going to have a very significant impact on the financial statements. If you go to the next slide, you know, there's been a lot going on right now with the new administration. You know, CLA has had a lot of webinars as it relates to federal funding and how that's impacted certain organizations. Here, we've listed kind of the executive orders. You know, from my understanding at this point in time, I know Trump has taken a hammer to the EPA, which provides a lot of the clean water funding, but right now, I'm not aware of any significant impacts that's going to impact some of the clean water, the wastewater programs and the federal funding that you guys receive. So as of now, I think you guys are in the clear, but Trump is going to be pushing through a larger bill that's going to address taxes, continuing his tax legislation as well as looking for further cuts. So while I don't think you guys will be impacted, I think it's something to continue to watch for. Something else that, there's clean energy credits out there. I think I've mentioned this in the past. Those have also been unscathed at this point in time. I don't think there will be a hammer to any clean energy credits, but you guys, we do have a lot of webinars on this topic. You know, it's a good way to keep up to speed in a fairly quick-changing environment that we're in right now. You guys want to go to the next couple slides, two down? So this is, this is the service team. You know, we've had a lot of really good continuity on our team. All of these team members have been with, worked on the MSD audit and been with CLA for five-plus years. That continuity really brings a lot of knowledge and a lot of different perspectives as we work through things, and we have a better understanding of how they operate each year. So you're getting a really good team that has a really strong understanding of MSD and I think can provide a high value of service to the organization. If you want to go to the next slide, one more. So this is related to the financial statement audit. So we kind of have two components of this, the financial statements and the single audit. I kind of consider that one. And then you have the pension plan. The financial statement and single audit effectively commences today. We'll have our interim work in May, field work in August, and then we issue in October. That's the timeframe that we've followed Phil every year since we've been your external auditor. If you want to go to the next slide, this is the timeline for the employee benefit plan audit. The employee benefit plan audit is a 1231-year end. The financial statements are a June 30-year end. So we actually start this early. Our field work is actually starting in April, and then we issue a report in June in the summertime. Go to the next slide. You know, this is kind of walks through our audit plan and approach. If you look in the bottom right, we talk about risks specific to MSD. The risk that we, you know, the risk that we see to MSD, there's no new risk to the organization this year, but we really focus on your estimates you have in these financial statements, so your allowance for bad debt, unbilled revenue, you have some insurance reserves, as well as the pension and NOPE, actual evaluations, those are the areas that we'll focus on. We also consider the control environment, which MSD has a very strong control environment. And then considering the control environment, you know, the inherent risk that helps us determine the extent of our audit work. If you'll go to the next slide. So here's, here's all the services that we're reporting. This first bucket here is the financial statement audit. It also includes a supplementary report on like a budgetary or fund level financial statements that's on a modified accrual basis, your single audit, and then we have an agreed upon procedure report. And then to the right is the three different employee benefit plan audits. So this, the scope of work is consistent with prior years. We'll go to the next slide. You know, this really outlines the responsibility of governance, the management team and the external auditors. What I'll say to this is, you know, on the next slide, it'll be my contact information. If you guys ever have any concerns, if you, you know, if you just want to reach out to us and whether it's getting understanding of the impact of changing legislation or anything that you want to talk through, my contact information's on the next slide. I just want to make sure that there's an open door that you guys have to reach out to me. We're here to support MSD and perform an independent audit as well as address any concerns that you guys might have. So I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Yep.
All right, next item, Todd will have an update on the emergency contracts that we reviewed at last month's meeting.
Good morning, excuse me. Good morning, everyone. So if you go ahead and grab this presentation, so you know, last, last month, we did have a report on emergency contracts, and I think there were some concerns and some ideas, some suggestions about how we should improve the process, and we took, we took those to heart. And I think there were some really good suggestions about timelines and so forth. So I'm going to give you an update as to what's been done since the last meeting. So if you go to slide one, to refresh your memory, this whole issue was around contract execution and timeliness around that execution for these emergency contracts. So to kind of refresh your memory on this, when work begins for an emergency project, normally there's no contract in place. I guess that's the inherent part, nature of emergency work. Emergency occurs, occurs, the work needs to start as soon as possible. The paperwork basically catches up with the work. Now, for two of the projects, we noted that the contracts were not executed timely. Now, the first contract or project was a facility project, which we don't have a lot of those. They're normally larger, I think, to my recollection from last year, we've had maybe three or four in the last 10 years. So we don't have a lot of them, but they are, they are generally larger. So for this particular project, it was about a 10, 10, 11 a month project, and the contract was executed about after 90% of the work had been completed, so it was a little late. Now, the next project was an open-cut project, which we have a lot more of those, I'd say two to four a year. They're generally shorter. This particular project was pretty quick. It was about a 30-day project. The contract was executed after the project was completed. So that one, that one was a little tougher because it was just a quick project. So move to slide two. Yes, sir.
Sorry. What was, what was the original appropriation on each of these two contracts?
I have to look here, let's see.
And did we stay, my objective of the question is that we stay closer within budget?
One was close and one was not.
Yeah, the, the one on Forsyth, that's the wrong one, I'm sorry. The Lema one with the facility one was originally $500,000, and then...
Which one of the project?
I'm sorry?
Which project number are you?
That's the facility, that's the first one, the big one.
The first one?
Yeah, and we ended up, ended up at $3 million.
It was $500,000 and...
Yeah, it started at $500,000, and then I guess we found...
Allen's chomping at the bit.
So to clarify on that specific one, that $500,000 was brought to the board. We knew we had an emergency. We had no idea what the scope of that emergency would be, so we brought a $500,000 to investigate initial appropriation. And then we followed up as we learned more information with additional appropriations as we learned more information during the investigation.
So there were several appropriations?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I remember, remember, I showed you the picture, there was like, they found an initial problem at one point, then they went down the line, they found more problems in another area that they didn't even realize was there as it kept working, so.
Yeah, most of the, there were, there were 10 emergency contracts over the four-year period that we looked at, so two to three a year, most of them, final cost came in under the original estimate.
Good.
Okay. All right, so we're at, I'm sorry, slide two. So in general, it is best practice to execute a contract as early in the process as possible, obviously protect all parties involved. So what are our risks here? I'm going to talk about that for a minute. So at the initial occurrence of the emergency, you know, the initial risk associated with not addressing emergency is significant. A lot of times, it involves imminent danger. I showed you the pictures last month, you know, the street had collapsed, there was holes in, you know, it has to be addressed immediately, regardless of there's a contract or not. Steps need to be taken. So once it repairs, the constructions start, there is risk of worker injury, there's risk of non-worker injury or property damage, there's contractor non or failed performance. Now, these are not specific to the emergency contracts, these risks are the risks that we face for all of our construction contracts, but just the fact, the difference is that the emergency contracts are moving much faster and the paperwork hasn't caught up. Now, how is the district addressing this risk? We have insurance in place, already in place. Now, contractor has insurance. We obtain proof of that coverage. We're trying to speed that process up a little bit, button it down a little tighter, but we do obtain that proof of insurance. We sign a contract with contractor. We want to speed that process up a little bit and button it up a little more tighter. Now, as for performance, as part of the annual overall prequalification, requalification process, that's where we determine which contractors can or can bid on our projects through our evaluation process. We do reviews of the performance from the prior year. Now, as it applies to the emergency contracts, that performance has to be at a satisfactory level or above. They also review their capabilities, they'll see how much equipment they had, they'll look at the crews, have a number of personnel, you know, will they be able to handle emergency contract in addition to their contract because they already have with the district? It doesn't make a lot of sense to add somebody to the district, to the emergency list that is, you know, stretched too thin, basically. So in essence, there's really two processes going on here, just the overall qualification process, which if approved, the contract gets on our list, and they can bid on our projects based on what category they're approved for. Then there's also the emergency contract evaluation process, which draws strictly from that, from that original list. So in other words, they had to be on the first list in order to even be considered for their second list, which is the emergency contractor list. Any questions?
Presumably, presumably the confirmation of the contractor's insurance has taken place prior to the emergency, right? So that isn't something that we would have to do after the emergency.
They actually do that as part of that overall qualification process. They obtain a certificate of insurance, but then once they get a project, they had to get, they had to get project-specific insurance as well, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions? All right, so let's move on to slide three. So these are the improvements to the process. These are additional requirements and provisions. So they've added language to the solicitation letters. You can read, the language says, "Please note that failure to properly provide documentation required to execute the emergency contract may result in the contract being removed from the emergency contract list." That language shows in a few different spots on different documentation as part of this process. Now, on the application process, again, one of the new requirements is that we're requiring the contractor at the time of prequalification to provide a certificate of insurance, even though they're already doing that as part of the overall qualification, but kind of doubling up there, but I think it's, it's a good idea to have it all in one place. Now, down on the acceptance forms, down in the bottom part of that slide, now, an additional requirement is for the open-cut projects, which is, are the projects that we have the most of, probably two to four a year. We're going to require that hourly and overtime rates for each trade be provided ahead of time. Again, it's just for the open cut. Now, the facilities will be done differently, and that will be done through the N O A process, and I will discuss that on our next page. All right, improvements to process, slide four. So these slides, slides four and five deal with timeline, timeline requirements. Now, before this, there were no timeline requirements. I think adding these, these due dates or goal dates will help a lot. For facilities, within five business days of declaration, the district will issue the N O A, which is a notice of reward, and then will require submission by a contractor of the wage rates, insurance, and performance bond within five business days of the N O A. Now, the construction engineer will have five days to review those rates. Now, there may be some back and forth here with the contractors, it gets a little tricky. They got to decide on what the rates are going to be. Now, once received from the contractor, legal will review the insurance within two business days. After the construction engineer completes a rate review process and decides on the rates, district has three business days to create and submit contract to the contractor for signature. Then the contractor has five business days to review, sign, and return the contract documents. Now, so if everything goes as planned, that should be completed within 23 days after declaration. Now, you cannot sign the contract until approved by the board via ordinance, so you have to wait for that. Slide five, open-cut tunnel. These, again, these are the projects that we have, probably two to four of these per year, within three business days of declaration, using those rates that we obtained through the acceptance form or the prequalification process. They will develop a contract and cost estimates, prepare a board write-up and funding instructions, and then they'll send the contractor and the N O A to the contract, to the contractor, I'm sorry. And then a complete insurance and contract documents are required to be submitted by the contract back to the district within five business days. Now, processes by engineer and a legal review of the documents should occur within three business days. Now, again, if everything goes as planned, we should have this completed 11 days after the declaration, but again, we have to wait, we cannot sign it until the board approves through an ordinance, you know, at the next meeting, so. Any questions?
Yeah, so just to, so, because I'd been, I was going to ask that, what the total amount of time with all those various days? You said 11 business days?
Right, right, after declaration.
Under this new process?
Right.
After the declaration of emergency?
Yeah, yes.
And where does the notice of acceptance fall in that? Is that 11 days after the notice of acceptance?
Is there a notice of acceptance under this?
Which depends, I mean, there's...
Or was it war?
Yeah.
Or award, declaration?
Yeah, yeah.
I had the wrong word there.
Yeah, I know, I was saying for notice of award, I'm sorry.
Okay, so 11 days after that?
Yeah, yeah.
And then waiting for a board approval?
Right, right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. No problem. There's no questions? I appreciate your time.
Hey, real quick, Todd, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
You and your department, you guys do a lot of work, and we appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
At least I do.
We do. Thank you, Todd. Next meeting tentative date, April 1st, 2025. Can I get a motion for a meeting adjourned?
Second.
Second. Thank you.
Okay, so we, Trustee Kistner, we actually have a little pause here. We need to wait till eight o'clock to start the program management meeting.
Tuesday, March 4th, thank you, sorry about that, 2025, you have a roll call?
Yes, the record will reflect that with trustee Watson online and all the trustees in the room, everybody is present.
Okay, we have meeting minutes from our February 4th, 2025 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, there are no comments by the chair. We have engineering department agenda items.
Good morning, trustees. Few items this morning. We'll go over, the first three items are all green infrastructure grants being awarded by the district. First one is a C S O volume reduction green infrastructure for 4250 Shaw parking lot. This ordinance will authorize the district to enter agreement with reinvent properties to provide financial assistance due to green infrastructure grant program. Purpose this project is to reduce combined sewer overflows to the Mississippi River per the long-term control plan and the consent decree. Project will reduce runoff volume with the installation of permeable pavers. The total cost of the project is estimated at $18,000, and reinvent properties is requesting that for reimbursement. In your packet, you see an exhibit. This is located in the Tower Grove neighborhood and redoing a parking lot with permeable pavement, which will reduce the combined sewer overflow. Next item is a green infrastructure grant for codes. This ordinance authorized the district to enter an agreement with 1115 Hampton Avenue Holdings, provide financial assistance through the grant program. Again, purpose to reduce combined sewer overflows, but this time to the River DePere per the long-term control plan and the consent decree. This project will reduce runoff with the installation of two bio-retention basins as part of the redevelopment. The total cost of project is $72,000, and the owner is requesting reimbursement for the full $72,000. Again, exhibit, this is located near Highway 40 and Hampton Avenue, just south of Highway 40.
I have a question.
Okay.
Just in general, you mentioned that this one is for the full cost, and the previous one was for a portion of the cost, I think, was it?
It can be for either, based on the, how much water the actual, what they're building will hold. In other words, that's why the prices vary. So in other words, we, they, we measure what the, whether the grain garden or permeable pavement, how much that will actually capture and allow to soak in the ground to get. So it's based on a dollar per gallon type.
Okay, so the bigger the impact, the greater percentage of the total cost?
Absolutely. If they're spending more money, they're still only paid for that amount of the gallon per cost. In a lot of cases, these, whether it be permeable pavement or rain garden, they're generally costing more. There's more things to it to get flow to that they're putting in sewers. Those are part of what we reimburse for. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think it is, yes. All right, the last grant program is for family care health centers. This ordinance authorized the district to enter agreement with family care health centers for the green infrastructure grant. This will reduce combined sewer overflows to the River DePere. This project reduced runoff with the installation. They're putting on bio-retention basin, green roof, and amended soils on the property. The total cost of project is $91,800. Family healthcare is requesting $91,800 reimbursement for the cost. This project is located near South Grand and Chippewa in South St. Louis City. All right, moving on to the projects, these first three are design elements of the capital program. The first one is the Adams Sanitary Relief. This ordinance will appropriate $1,826,000 and authorize the district to amend a contract with Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering for the design of the Adams Sanitary Relief as part of the watershed consulting services for the LeMay sanitary district or system improvements. Adams Sanitary Relief is a lump sum cost project for the design of approximately 17,000 feet of 18 to 48-inch diameter sanitary sewers and entrances. The purpose of project is alleviate wet weather building backups and overcharged sanitary sewers, and to remove five overflowing manholes, S S Os, that are required by the consent decree. The appropriation for design is $334,000 less than what was originally in the budget. That's simply because of the design changes that were, after the planning portion, the changes we're making in the design. Burns &amp; McDonald is committed to just under 40% minority and women participation for this project. The original goal of the contract with Burns &amp; Mac was for 20% minority and women participation. They're exceeding that goal. It'll probably be at least two years before construction. Generally, a project with 17,000 feet, that's like three miles, so we'll be in design for probably a year, at least another year, depending on whether we have to get out of the street and get more easements, things like that. So probably some utility relocation, so every bit of three to four-year window for this project. Thank you. Next item is the C S O Brentwood and Redbud Interceptor Elimination and Sewer Separation. This action appropriates $250,000 and authorizes the district to amend a contract with H D I for the post-design services for this C S O Brentwood project. This is a multi-year construction project that's actually later on to this agenda we bid this past month. These are for services during construction, such as review of shop drawings, submittals by the contractor that the engineer has to review, a very complicated project, a lot of shoring that's going to take place for this project. The project overall, the construction is about 15,000 feet, 8 to 30-inch diameter in storm sewers, and the removal of public and private I N I from a number of properties. Again, the purpose this project is to remove inflow from a combined sewer system, which will allow us to eliminate combined sewer overflow required by the consent decree. Again, their appropriation for this is $250,000. All right, next project, very similar, for the Fillmore Pump Station Rehabilitation. This ordinance appropriates $200,000 and authorized the district to enter into amendment with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly for post-design services for the Fillmore Pump Station Rehabilitation. This project is a construction of pump station improvements, replacement of equipment and miscellaneous improvements to the facility and site. The purpose this project is to renew this aging pump station and bring it back into compliance. The total cost for the construction is $2.4 million. This was another project that you'll see later in the, in the agenda that we bid this past month. Again, the total appropriation is above what we had originally planned, but there was some additional work that got added to this project during the design that was required, primarily around the adding a man lift and additional penthouse work, so. All right, on to those construction jobs I just talked about. The next five projects are projects that we bid this past month. The first one is the Bissell Coldwater Missouri Merrimack Public I N I Contract E. This action appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter into a construction contract. The work to be done consists of rehabilitation of approximately 35,230 feet of sanitary sewers from 6 to 30 inch in diameter, using the cured and placed pipe method, rehabilitation of 21 manholes, and 728 service connection, and 34 point repairs. The purpose this project is to reduce inflow and infiltration in multiple watersheds in St. Louis County. We received two bids for this. The low bid was from Insituform Technologies. The bid was below our designer's estimate, and our appropriation of $3,750,000 is below the original budget for the project. Insituform Technologies is committed to just over 20% minority and women participation. There's a 10% goal for minority and 10% goal for women, and their bid meets that goal. The next item is the C S O Brentwood and Redbud Interceptor Elimination Project. The appropriates, action appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter a construction contract. The work consists of approximately 16,500 feet of sanitary and storm pipe from 6-inch to 36-inch, and includes about 1,000 feet inside tunnel, and the removal of inflow sources from 24 private properties. The purpose this project is to remove excess inflow from the combined sewer system and private defects, and allows us to eliminate interceptor 118 and outfall 111. The district received three bids on this project. The low bid was from Fred M. Luth &amp; Sons. The bid is below our design estimate. Our two-year appropriation for this project is $21,500,000. We're asking for an appropriation of $14 million this year, and an additional appropriation of $7.5 million next year. Sorry, did I say 14,000? I meant 14 million, I apologize. This is below our original estimate, planning estimate of $24,470,000. So we got some good bids on that project. Fred M. Luth is committed to just over 20% minority and women participation on the project, which meets our 10% minority and 10% women goals on this project.
Rich, are we seeing, I mean, you've said twice now, we've seen budgets, we've seen bids consistently below our budgeted amount, our engineer's budget, internal budget amount. Are we seeing some calming in the prices?
We are. Again, a lot of it depends on the competition and the amount of work. We have less of this work that we've done, say, the last 10 years, so that's brought a lot more competition, so that, but, you know, it depends on the type of project and availability, but yeah, we have started seeing that. It's pretty much been closer to our budget. This particular one is a little bit unusual. We were below the, we had three bids, the other two were just slightly higher than this, so our estimate was even below our original budget. Keep in mind, when we set those budgets, almost three years prior to actually doing the work, the design, so.
Keep it up.
Good question. Next is the Fillmore Pump Station Rehabilitation. This action appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter a construction contract. The work consists of the construction of various pump station improvements, including replacement of pumps and associated electrical components, replacement of the man lift, construction of a new penthouse, replacement and relocation of the generator, and other miscellaneous building improvements and site work. Purpose this is to extend the useful life of this pump station. District received three, I'm sorry, two bids on this project. The low bid was from Corrigan Company. Our low bid was above our designer's estimate, and the appropriation of $3 million, which includes $100,000 for permitting, is above. So here's a project that we actually are above. When you're dealing with the pump station and a lot of the equipment, the estimating for that's a little tougher. A lot of it can be based on, on when that materials can be brought in. On this project, Corrigan is committed to almost 27% minority and women participation, which meets our 10% minority and 10% women goals. Next project is the Infrastructure Repair Rehabilitation Contract A. This appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter a construction contract. The work consists of rehabilitation of approximately 78,000 feet of sanitary sewers from 6 to 30-inch diameter using the cured and placed pipe method. The purpose this project is to reduce infiltration and inflow into the sewer system, and rehabilitate older, damaged, and deteriorated sanitary sewers throughout the district. Sewers are identified for rehabilitation through our annual C M O B program, which is our maintenance and operation inspection program that's performed by district staff. The district received two bids for this. The low bid was from Insituform Technologies. The bid was below our design estimate, and our appropriation of $4.3 million is below the planned budget for the project. Next item is the Stormwater Infrastructure Repair Rehabilitation. This action appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter a construction contract. The work to be done consists of rehabilitation of approximately 12,000 feet of storm sewers from 8 to 42-inch in diameter using the cured and placed pipe method. The purpose this project is to rehabilitate older and damaged, deteriorated storm sewers throughout the district. Again, these are identified by district staff. Again, these are identified by district staff through inspections of the system. This is, we call our C-MOM program for our storm sewer system. The district received two bids. A low bid on this project was from SAC Construction. The bid was slightly above our engineers' estimate for this project, and just slightly above, we're appropriating 2.1 million, I'm sorry, 2,150,000 for this project. Original estimate was 2 million, and our budget was 2 million for the project. Then finally, one, one item, this is requesting authorization to proceed to condemnation for the South Brentwood Boulevard Sanitary Relief. This ordinance authorized staff to proceed with further condemnation efforts, including the filing of all necessary court pleading and documents, leading the acquisition of a permanent easement and temporary construction easement on one parcel of ground in Clayton. The easements are temporary construction needed for a project which consists of 1,300 feet of sanitary sewers, eight to 24-inch in diameter. The purpose of this project is provide a level of service for the system during wet weather and eliminating one constructed sanitary sewer overflow. The district, there were five easements. There's one remaining easement on this project. In your packet, there's an exhibit showing that easement on Francis Place. It's just east of the inner belt. The line that you see, red line coming across, is actually a pipe and tunnel that comes between those homes. So, as you can see, we're pretty much utilizing the whole backyard of that property for, for the tunnel intake or outtake, depending on the, how the contractor performs his work. We're going to be at that location for a pretty lengthy period of time. It is a rental property, and at this time, we haven't been able to reach an agreement with the property owner. They have hired legal representation, and we continue to talk in order to keep the project on schedule. We're requesting to go to condemnation on this one. So, some of the things we're discussing with them is how to, you know, screen and block off the backyard during the construction and things like that, since it is a rental property. Any questions? That concludes the Engineering Department Agenda Items.
If not, our next tentative meeting date is April 1st, April Fool's Day, 2025. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Trustee Evans, we'll get things swapped out here and be ready to go with the Finance Committee. Trustee Evans, we're ready to begin when, when you are.
We will call to order the 312th meeting of the Finance Committee. Get a roll call, please.
Yes, we will make sure the record reflects that with Trustee Watson online and all other trustees in the room, that everybody's present.
A motion to approve the minutes of the February 4th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, first item is the Key Performance Indicators Report.
Good morning, trustees. I will start with the chart that's in the upper right-hand corner, which shows our user charge forecast. Right now, commercial revenues are forecasted to be approximately $600,000 above our budget, and that's primarily due to additional usage that we're seeing in that sector. Our residential revenue is forecasted to be about $500,000 under budget. Again, we're seeing a reduction in usage in that particular segment. So, overall, we're tracking within $100,000 favorable of our budget. So, our revenues are going to be hopefully right on target. I think we have done a pretty good job of kind of refining our budget processes as we've gone along throughout the years. Initially, our budgets and in terms of revenue, our revenue would come in less than budget, and we had to rely on our expenses to come in less than budget to kind of make up for that revenue shortfall. We, again, have made some refinements to our budget, and I think what we're also seeing is that the declining usage, for the most part, is kind of plateaued, and, and hopefully we'll see it at around the levels that we're experiencing now. So, for a typical residential customer, they use about five CCFs of water. At one point in time, that was up as much as eight, probably 10 years or so ago, but with the changes in kind of plumbing and just people being a little bit more conservative, that amount has dropped over the years. So, moving over to the chart in the top left-hand corner of the slide here, this gives you information regarding our budget forecast relative to our expenses. So, with our capital program, we are currently forecasted to be 126 million dollars below budget. However, $90 million of that amount represents projects that were moved from FY '25 to FY ' '26. So, our true budget variance, if you were to compare expenditures to what we actually budgeted for those projects, we're looking at about a $35 million favorable variance. With respect to our operating budget, we're forecasted to be 3.8 million dollars below budget, and our debt service is forecasted to be 4.2 million dollars above budget. But, again, that, that service amount is a little bit misleading because that forecast includes 4.1 million dollars of cost of issuance funds relating to our SRF loan that we got for the FBI project. That was a $640 million loan. So, we will definitely save a ton of money on debt service relative to the 4.1 million that we had to pay to execute that bond agreement. This was not something that we anticipated when we prepared the FY '25 budget. That's why you're seeing that amount being unfavorable. Going down to the slide in the lower left-hand corner, which shows our debt coverage ratios, right now, we're meeting all of our targets. 1.8 times our, I'm sorry, 1.8 coverage is what we target for our all-in bonds, which includes our subordinated and our revenue bonds. And for our senior bonds, which are just our revenue bonds, we target 2.5 times coverage. We are forecasted to be 4.0 for senior and 2.4 for all-in, which exceeds, again, our targets and what we have in the recommission. And then finally, the slide in, in the lower left-hand corner shows our average collection periods. We are still roughly at about 58 days for our average collection period. That is above our target of 45 days, but as I've mentioned before, that target of 45 days typically is for utilities that have the ability to shut off service, and MSD is not.
Excuse me, can I?
Sure.
I was meaning to raise this, and not to discuss in this meeting, but just to put that out there. The last time I went to pay an MSD bill, I was paying more attention to it because now I'm involved with MSD, and I noticed that the online payment was not as smooth or as intuitive as some of the other local utilities are, water and electric and gas, frankly. And I'm wondering if improvements to that online payment system, you know, kind of overhauling or tweaking whatever it would be to make it sort of fewer steps along the process, less to remember, more retained information, so that a couple of clicks and you do it. For people like me, it's, it can speed up the process, also getting those alerts, hey, you're, you know, the, the text alert that says your bill due, due date is coming up and something. Those things all, I think, contribute to higher collections.
I, I would agree with that, and we actually have a project that's slated to start in the second quarter of this calendar year to replace our customer information portal, and it will also include changes to the app that we have out there. The app that we have is really outdated and needs to be refined, and so that's a project that we're actually going to start on this year.
Good, I think that'll be helpful.
I think it will as well.
Experience, and I just ran into several people over the last four or five weeks that have experienced the same thing, where the mail is affecting, I, I don't mail it in anymore, I drop it in the box in front because I, I come down, but, I mean, we had a situation where two payments never got to MSD. That has to add to the length of time. And I had a lady yesterday tell me that she had a problem six months ago where she had to pay a couple of payments and never got there, checks never got to MSD.
I can tell you that there are, we are like most entities and most customers at the post office experiencing delays in terms of receipt of mail in a timely manner. I think some customers have, as Ms. Kusner pointed out, have moved to electronic payments. We really try to push ACHs where customers allow us to go in and debit their accounts so that we can minimize the impact of the delays in the mail service, but unfortunately, that's not anything that we can control. I will tell you, I've actually gone down to the post office and met with personnel down there because we were having some issues with our lockbox payments not being remitted to us in a timely manner. And to be quite honest with you, the response I got didn't give me a sense of confidence that it was going to be fixed anytime soon. So, we have been encouraging our customers to, you know, if you're going to pay by mail, your traditional five-day mailing process is more likely not going to make it to us in a timely manner, but what we have done, we are pretty lenient on waiving late charges. If a customer calls in and says, hey, I mailed this to you, and we get at a couple of days late, we will adjust those late charges so that they're not penalized for that.
Did we, do we know, I mean, I'm sure we know, how many payments we receive electronically versus paleozoically in the mail? And we're moving toward, I think we're moving consumers, not just here, but across the, the economy to more, to more tele or, or electronic transfers. Is there any way to assist that, that movement? So, because I'm assuming it's cheaper for us, it's cheaper for the consumer, and it's quicker.
Believe it or not, it's actually not cheaper to pay electronically versus with your traditional lockbox process. What you're starting to see is the credit card interchange fees are a lot higher than they used to be because more people are paying electronically, which seems counterintuitive, but we've seen costs related to those particular transactions going up, and a lot of that is predicated on how that customer pays. For instance, there are companies that will solicit customers, not just MSD customers, but people in general, and ask them if they want them to take care of paying their bills electronically, and if they give them approval. What we have seen is that that particular entity will use a credit card, which gives them large rebates, and those rebates were being passed on to MSD in the form of interchange fees, and so what we did is we actually entered into, we initiated a project because we identified that that cost is going up a lot more than we thought it should have been, and we have blocked those credit cards that, we call them aggregators, it's really a couple of entities that are paying these bills with, again, these high rebate cards. We will not accept those kind of, those kind of cards, and so we've been able to kind of drive that cost down some, but there's still some people out there that pay via that way, and that in turn increases the cost, not just for us, but for them as well.
Might I just, I, the one thing I think we gotta, and we, I think we put it in our, our sort of founding documents or driving documents, is we want to focus on the customer, make sure that they're having a great, as good an experience as possible, but I do think it's important for us to, to think about, you know, how do we make that? And it sounds like this new app will help, but.
Yeah, we have also had campaigns in which we target customers that they pay electronically. We try to get them to continue that, but it's cheaper if they switch to an ACH, which is basically us just drawing money out of their account. And we try to get more customers on e-bills as well. That helps to kind of drive down the cost, just our overall collection process and enhances our collections, and if a customer signs up for e-bills, they do get those reminders that, hey, your bill is due, and kind of assists with reducing the timeframe that it takes for us to collect.
If you sign up for e-bills, does MSD then not send paper bills and therefore save money on?
Correct. If you sign up for an electronic bill, we typically don't send manual bills. The only exception to that is you could have a property owner who's renting a property, they get an e-bill, the tenant may receive a hard copy of the bill.
I will say too, just my personal experience, I get paper bills and I pay electronically, and I don't recall ever being asked if I want to be e-bill and not get paper bill. Like, other, other entities have actually asked if you want to forego paper bills. I, I do that all the time when I have that option, so another, and then there's cost savings for MSD, not to put it through the mail.
Absolutely.
So, I think there's more that we can do on probably five or six different things to reduce the amount of paper bills, the cost of it, shorten up the time between bill cycle and payment, all of that.
One of, one of the complications we have with that, we can put, we can put a message on paper bills to tell people, but as an unapplied for service, we don't have contact information that, you know, an Ameren or a spy or somebody where you actually have to call them and actively turn on the service.
That's true.
So, that's a complication that we have, not that there aren't ways we can collect it, and we have communications with people, we do try to collect that information, Marion's group does do that, but we don't have contact information for all of our customers for, for that reason. So, we, Mary and I talk about that all the time when we have banking partners in and talk about services and ways we can improve those processes, but that's always a complication that applied-for services don't have that we do.
Ms. Temple, we, we do, when that customer calls in, our call center staff is trained to ask them for email addresses, phone numbers, and also if they're interested in signing up for an e-bill.
Well, I will be on the lookout to do it for myself.
Thank you, I'd be happy to help you with that. Okay, if there are no more questions about the indicators report. Okay, if there are no more questions about the indicators report, I'd like to move on to the next item, which is our FY26 budget process. So let me just kind of give you just a quick update on kind of where we are in our budget process. So we are required by charter to give the board preliminary budget by March the 15th. We will deliver preliminary budgets to you during your trustees meeting on March the 13th. So you'll get a copy, a hard copy of the preliminary budget as well as, there's a second document which we call a budget supplement. And that supplement is really information on our capital program. So you'll get those two documents during the afternoon of your, your board meeting on March the 13th. I am going to give you just a real quick overview today of what you can expect to find in the budget document. Just quickly go over some of the numbers. This is the first time that we've actually done this presentation during the March committee meeting. Typically, we wait and we schedule something in April. We're going to do that, I will give you a more detailed presentation in April. We will introduce all of our budget ordinances in May. We have a public hearing that's scheduled, or that will be scheduled after the board meeting. Actually, it'll start at 6:00 to give information on both the budget and the rate adjustments. And typically, that meeting, the public hearing is overseen by the board chair. And we have two other board members that sign up to serve on what we call a finding of facts committee. The purpose of that committee is to review our taxes that we are proposing and to make a recommendation to the full board of trustees if those recommendations are appropriate. So I will be soliciting members to serve on that finding of facts committee. I will send you guys an email relating to that. So I will go ahead and start a quick presentation here. So as of now, we are forecasting total revenues in the budget to be approximately 1.1 million, billion, I'm sorry, dollars, which balances to the total expenditures that you see there. The bulk of our revenues come from our wastewater charges, which we're projecting to be approximately $552 million. And we have revenue bonds that we intend to issue that total approximately 204.6 million. Included in that revenue bond total is a refunding of about 122 million. So we're going to refund 122 million dollars of debt. So what you're seeing in that revenue amount are the proceeds that we'll get to refund that debt. So in the expenses, you'll see debt service of 282 million dollars roughly. That includes the 122 million that we're going to turn around and pay off for old bonds that are out there at a higher rate. We are going to use approximately 294 million dollars of fund balance. And what that fund balance represents are funds that are available in our sanitary replacement fund right now that we'll use to pay for projects. So there are funds that we already have through bond issuances or through just cash that we've generated that we're going to use to pay off projects, to pay for projects.
We're not like dipping into the reserves, these are programmed funds.
Correct. We are not dipping into reserves, these are just balances that we have.
Right, carried forward over years.
Correct, correct. The 18 million dollars of stormwater taxes that relate to the new stormwater capital fund, we actually are expecting in FY26 to have a grand total of 34.9 million dollars with 18 million coming from taxes and roughly 16 million from the impervious charge that we will assess during the fiscal year. So moving to the next slide. So our general fund budget will include about 2.8 million dollars of incremental budget items. These are items that staff has to prepare a business case and present that to the executive director and also my budget staff to review. So we have 2.8 million dollars of incremental expenses that are tied to our strategic business operating plan. The bulk of that amount relates to certain expenditures pertaining to IT. And I will give you additional detail on that during the next budget presentation. About 6% or roughly 7.6 million dollars of the increase relates to increases in personnel services. And then we have an additional 8%, which represents an increase in our supply expenses. And that's primarily driven by increases in our chemical expenses that we are carrying, are seeing. About 5% or approximately 12.1 million dollars of the overall increase in the general fund operating budget. I'm sorry, there's an increase of about 12.1 million dollars from our FY25 budget, which is a 5% increase. Included in our budget is a total capital project budget of about 599 million dollars. Of that amount, 560 million dollars of it relates to wastewater projects and 39 million pertains to stormwater projects. We assume in our forecast that we will just issue an additional 204 million dollars of bonds. And as I indicated before, 122 million of that is for a refunding issue. This is the first year that the district will receive a full year of revenue related to our stormwater capital program. And that's estimated to be at about 35 million dollars. Next slide, please. Okay, I want to give you some information regarding our rate adjustments. So this slide shows that the new monthly residential bill for a typical residential customer using five CCF's of water, that customer will experience about a 4.1, I'm sorry, $4.62 increase or 7.6%. As I mentioned before, the district has seen its volumes decline. And as a result, the typical customer has declined. From two years ago, a typical customer used about six CCF's of water. We're now at about a five CCF amount. This rate adjustment has previously been approved through the wastewater ordinance that the board passed last year. So we're not asking for board approval for the rate adjustment because that has already been granted. Okay, next slide, please.
Real quick, Marion.
Sure.
FY24 charge, typical monthly charge was?
It was around $58 for FY24.
And so we had a, we had an increase of 6, 7%?
Correct. I think it was around 6%. I can get you the exact percentage.
But we're, we are seeing a 7% increase generally, 6, 7% increase generally year over year for how long?
For this particular rate cycle, we started off with, I think it was a 6.5% increase. Actually, for residential customers in the city, they actually saw a decline of like a negative 48%. So this year, all customers will see approximately a 7.6%. Followed by, for the next two years, I think we're at like around 7.5%. And then we have to go before the rate commission to get approval for subsequent increases for the next four-year period. And as of right now, what we were projecting when we did the rate commission process for the next four-year cycle is that we would see increases that would be below 5%.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, just real quick with respect to the FY26 preliminary budget total. Again, our district expenses are projected to be about 1.1 billion dollars. The largest portion of that, as usual, is our capital program, which is budgeted for roughly 599 million dollars. Most of that is for wastewater, 560 million, with the remaining 39 million dollars of the capital budget being for stormwater projects. Debt service of 282 million is 24% of that total. Once again, 122 million of that is to refund bonds. The district operating budget of 274 million dollars is 24% of that amount. So are there any questions that I can answer? Again, we will have a more detailed presentation. We didn't want to just give you a budget book and not give you just an overview of what to expect. Okay, thank you for your time.
All right, I've got the next few items. The first thing I've got is a resolution to approve an option year on a contract with US Bank. US Bank provides depository services for us as well as dispersment bank accounts, safekeeping accounts for securities. They hold project funds when we have bond issuances where we bring in funds. This is the second one-year renewal of the five possible renewals. They've been a good service provider, so I'm going to ask for approval to exercise the option year and continue that relationship. Any questions?
Are we voting on that now or?
No, no, I'm sorry, I will, I'll have it at the board meeting. All right, so next, I've got something that's, that's a little bit different. I want to talk a little bit about our DC plans. Normally, quarterly, we tend to focus on defined benefit plans, which are great plans and the primary retirement tool for a portion of our staff. But we do have about 70% of our staff now that are, that, whose primary retirement plan is the defined contribution plan, and all of our employees have access to a deferred compensation plan. We don't really talk about how those are being used or what those look like. And so I wanted to just take a few minutes to give you an update on these. I think it'll be good information for the employees too. So start on the key info, not going to go in a lot of detail here. But the deferred compensation plan is where employees voluntarily tell MSD, hey, I want to save a portion of my salary, I don't want to take it today. I want it to go into an investment account where it's invested and then upon separation from service from MSD, it'll be accessible to me. So this goes into Vanguard Plan. We have, I'll talk a little bit about the participation in this plan, but there's about 110 million dollars in this plan right now. All, all MSD employee contributions, all voluntary. Forty, 10 years ago, it was about 48 million. So we've seen, seen overall balances more than double in the last 10 years. This plan's been around for a long time. Again, this is an option for every MSD employee. The defined contribution plan on the right-hand side is for employees that were hired in 2011 and after. They're no longer, they're not eligible to be part of the defined benefit plan. Total balances in this plan are about 34 million dollars. 14 years ago, that was zero, 10 years ago, it was about 2.5 million. So as every new employee comes in, they are automatically put into this plan. This is all MSD contributions, all employer contributions in this plan. So MSD provides a set percentage of employee's salary, again, coming from MSD, not from the employee. And then an employee in this plan, if they voluntarily participate in deferred compensation plan, can also earn some matching funds, which is typical of a lot of defined contribution plans. So this plan covers about 70% of our active employees right now. So the goal here of these plans is to improve retirement readiness for, for our employees. All right, next page, we have really good participation in these plans. We, over 80% of our existing employees participate voluntarily in the deferred compensation plan. That's about 20 percentage points higher than 10 years ago, whereas a little over 60%. And in the defined contribution plan, more than 90% of those participants are voluntarily participating in the deferred compensation plan, so are earning some extra matching funds. The average match is about 1.7% of their pay. The max match MSD would give is two, so we're getting pretty close to the, to the max match. That's a higher match than there used to be, so we're seeing more participation than there used to be. So again, that is a good sign for overall participation and future retirement readiness. On the deferred comp side, the average deferral for an employee is actually 8% of pay. And that tends to range based on age. So employees under 30 years old average about 4%. Employees 55 and older average more than 10%. So we're seeing people as they near retirement increase their deferral, increase their savings. On the next page, so both of these funds are invested, are in Vanguard. They are employee-directed investment options, so we have a slate of diversified options for those employees. Vanguard does some benchmarking. So on the deferred compensation side, Vanguard would say that about two-thirds of our employees in that plan have what's called age-appropriate allocations. The typical Vanguard plan is about 74, so decently close to the average. Typically, where our employees are, are different, just like in other Vanguard plans, we have some that are probably more aggressive than what their age might indicate where they should be from an equity allocation standpoint, and some that are less. We tend to be over-aggressive, our employees tend to be over-allocated to equities, which has been good for returns over time, but there's obviously risk with that too. On the defined contribution side, we have over 80% with age-appropriate allocations as defined by Vanguard. That is higher than other Vanguard plans. That's primarily because the default option in this plan is the target date funds. And a target date fund by definition is age-appropriate. So you choose kind of your, you know, expected retirement date, and then the fund balances over time, going from a really aggressive equity allocation. So employees that are targeting 30, 40 years retirement from now, or these funds are probably about 90% equity. If you were planning on retiring this year, it'd be about 50/50 equity in, in bonds. But lots of participation and good overall allocations. On the next page, performance, we don't tend to talk performance in these plans, which we usually do on the defined benefit side, but those charts there, the graphs, the bar graphs, are annual overall performance of these plans, they're roughly similar. Deferred compensation is a little bit higher in equity than the defined contribution, but they're pretty similarly invested overall. So you can see that in 2024, those plans returned, you know, 15 and 14%. Over the last 10 years, you're in between 8 and 9% on average for the participants. So those are, those are strong overall returns. So employees should feel comfortable that these plans are giving them a good investment options. I want to look at just how balances have changed on the next plan. This gives you another idea of how these plans are being used. So 10 years ago, in the deferred compensation plans, this is the voluntary plan, average balances were about 60K, and as you would expect, employees with longer tenure would have higher balances. Today, the average balance is almost $100,000. Matter of fact, there's over, right about 25% of the employees in this plan have six-figure balances and higher. You can see that on the right-hand side, the employees that have a 10-year, 10-year or higher, the average balance is 180,000. Every employee in that group was in this group on the left-hand side that had an average balance of less than 60,000. So I think that's good evidence that this plan, by staying in it, staying invested, continuing to contribute, you're seeing excellent outcomes that are going to improve people's retirement, retirement readiness. Look at the same thing for the defined contribution side. Again, 10 years ago, defined contribution was just started, it'd just been in existence for a few years. So the average balance was only $11,000, but today, it's 48,000. And again, remember that average is going to be impacted too by new employees. We're putting new employees in every year who are going to have a small balance. So it's kind of dwarfing what the people who've been in this plan for a while are doing. Those people on the far right with 10-year-plus experience in the defined contribution plan today are averaging over 100,000 balance. They were part of that group that only had an average of 11,000 10 years ago. So again, we're seeing great performance from this plan, which is helping, helping employees. So, and currently, we've got about 15% of these employees, again, this is a program that didn't even exist 15 years ago, have balances in the six figures over 100,000. So I'm really excited about the way these plans have performed. We haven't usually talked to you about this, but since 70% of our current employees, this is their primary retirement plan, I thought it'd be a good idea just to give you an idea of what, how those plans are being used, what the performance has been, how they're preparing our employees for future retirement readiness. And so I hope you found that interesting. Any questions? All right, then the last thing is just the portfolio update. Not a lot of difference as usual here, although we did. Not a lot of difference as usual here, although we did see total balances go up about $25 million. That's in the upper left. This last month was probably the last relatively big month we would see of annual tax inflows, so we will likely start to see those balances kind of moderate and even start to go down as we get into the periods where we start paying larger debt service, like at the beginning of May. Our yield to maturity is roughly steady. We went up one basis point to just over 4%. Excuse me. The benchmark came down 13 basis points, so now we're starting to see kind of midterm rates start to fall. So things in that, in between one and five years, now we're seeing rates start to fall there. It's down 13 basis points, about 409, so getting pretty close to the benchmark maturity. Weighted average maturity for our portfolio went up a whole nine basis points, so we took advantage, but luckily, before these rates started falling, to put some money out two and three years to match it with some debt service payments that'll be due then. Benchmark stayed pretty steady at 182. Sector allocation, the key is they were within our policy limits, so we are in compliance with the investment policy, although we've got a, we're up a few basis points on the treasury bond note percentage and down a few basis points on commercial paper. Those just are kind of opportunistic. Because we put some of these funds out farther, our only real opportunity there was treasury bonds or Fed agencies, and the treasury bonds provided a better opportunity. Fund summary in the bottom left, not big changes. I did want to talk a little bit about the MSD operations, that's where most, the bulk of the money is, and that's really kind of a catch-all. I've been looking for ways to kind of break out that balance a little bit to give you a better idea of what makes that up. The problem is, while I have real-time access to what we have in our bank accounts and investment accounts, until the financial statements, monthly financial statements come out a few weeks later, I don't really have visibility in exactly how those are allocated. But we can estimate just based on where we've been. So roughly of that 650 million, 120 million of it is allocated to stormwater. We've got 60 to 70 million reserved for debt service. About 350 to 400 million of that is reserved for capital projects, so that's part of our capital project funds. And that leaves less than $100 million that is mostly for reserves. So we have some cash reserves, and then we have water backup reserves, insurance, claims, emergency fund, that sort of thing. So that's kind of pretty high level, but gives you a little bit of a better idea of how that 650, what it's there for. Then maturity distribution, again, pretty similar. We went down a few basis points on our, on our zero-to-one-year holdings, and that went up, excuse me, on some of the farther-out holdings, as I said, was we pushed, pushed some funds out, and then the benchmark roughly stayed the same. They actually increased their zero-to-one holdings just by about one to two basis points, but not, no big swings there. And that is the operating fund portfolio. Any questions about that? From anybody? All right, Trustee Evans, that is all I have for the finance meeting.
Okay. Next meeting tentative date is April 1st. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Wilson, we're ready when you are.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Like to welcome you to the March Stakeholder Relations Committee meeting. Going to get a roll call, please.
All right, once again, we'll make sure the record reflects. With Trustee Watson online, everybody else in the room, everybody is present.
Thank you. I have no comments. Entertainer motion for approval of the February minutes Stakeholder Relations Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. No objection, approved. First, the third, fourth agenda item, but it's the first on Ms. Keenster.
Actually, I'm sitting in for Virginia today.
How are you today?
Very good. Good morning, trustees. I just have one item that I would like to cover. It is for the approval to enter into a contract with Segment Technology for our title quote application. The previous contract with Java 360 has expired. We went out for an RFP, and Segment Technology had the best offer for us, so we're asking to enter into a one-year contract with two additional optional one-year options after that. Any questions?
I was just going to ask, it's pretty striking, the difference between the high bid and the low bid.
It is.
What, any reason for that?
I think the largest reason was the amount of enhancement support that some of the vendors were proposing. Some of them were wanting to do a full, larger rewrite, which, that's a separate project that we will be doing for the upgrade of the Title III, Title Quote system. This one is really to address the enhancements for security fixes that have been called out in the penetration testing and for ongoing support and maintenance.
You're confident that the chosen one is providing a sufficient range of services for our need?
We are, yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, it looks like you're next.
Thank you, Trustee Wilson. I am here this morning to present to you a new resolution, number 3946, for your consideration. This will govern the sale or lease of district-owned surplus property. The process for both of these transactions have been governed here, too, by two different resolutions. Those resolutions date back to the early 1990s, and we have found that the procedures in those resolutions are a bit outdated. They don't give us some flexibility. As property values have increased incredibly throughout that period, we need a little bit more flexibility. Properties that don't have a lot of value in the market that we need to put to some use can get some money from, like for a lease or a sale. We shouldn't have to get multiple appraisals for, and we didn't have the ability to retain a real estate broker, so we couldn't put properties on the MLS. So what we're doing is we're having one simple resolution to address both sale and lease, and that will incorporate the procedures of a policy that we have developed. We've taken all the good things from the prior resolutions, put them in the policy, and so now we'll have some flexibility. It allows us on properties of small value to retain a real estate broker. It allows us to use other methods to advertise property and that sort of thing. It doesn't require us to get a complicated appraisal for a property that is valued below $10,000, for example. So we think, you know, this is a good way to go. Now, rest assured, any individual lease or sale of district property will still come before all of you for consideration and approval. Staff is not trying to govern, you can ask all the questions about how we got there at the time of the individual lease or sale, but it doesn't require this rigidity of process. Any questions? For the policy?
Yeah.
There is. Trustee, and I was realizing as I was preparing that perhaps it would have been helpful for you all to see that, and I apologize. I'll be more than happy to provide it to you all, and if you have any questions, feel free to let us know.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
You'll email that to us before next week.
I will, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. McGowan.
Yes, good morning. This morning, we're going to go over the semi-annual regulatory compliance report for 2024. Turning to the second page there, it kind of lists the compliance measures that we'll be talking about this morning, plant compliance, and then customer service and collection system compliance measures. Slide number three, this goes over our plant compliance, the table here. I'd like to start out by, you know, making sure everybody understands that our expectations is for all of our plants to have zero violations and 100% compliance. And as you can see from the table, we were able to do that at all of our plants, with the exception at Bissell. I want to point out that at Coldwater and LeMay, both of those plants, they've made five years in a row without any violations, which kicks them up to that platinum award status as far as the Nakua Performance Award goes. And just to kind of explain how those awards work, there's three tiers of awards. Silver award is given to a plant that has five violations or less per calendar year, and then the gold award is given to plants who have zero violations for the year. And then the platinum, like I said, that's five years in a row without having any violation. So we're very proud of all those plants obtaining platinum status. However, at Bissell, they had a rough year last year, 10 violations, which is unacceptable. As you know, we have to report every violation to DNR. Rich's DEC group does that for us. Rich's group has done a great job of explaining to DNR of what's causing these violations at Bissell, all the issues that we have there, and as well as what we plan on doing to resolve those issues. Most of the issues at Bissell last year occurred during high river levels. I think we talked about that at the last update meeting we gave, and also some untimely equipment failures. At the same time, we were having these high river levels, and that's a bulk of our issues there at Bissell. DNR understands what we're going through. They understand the plan that we've got in place to take care of those issues. They're on board with what we're doing, and they also, obviously, they know that we've got the Fine Screen project that is underway at Bissell, as well as the FBI project. Both of those projects, when completed, will go a long way to help resolving a lot of the issues that we see there. The good news is, we've gone without any violations at Bissell since July of last year, and we're working hard to keep that streak going, so.
Just the cycle, calendar year cycle?
Yeah, calendar year, January, yes. Okay, the next slide, number four. This is our emergency response rate. The goal is to respond to emergency calls in less than four hours 90% of the time, and as you can see, we're just slightly under that at 87%. And that is primarily due to the two rain events we had in 2024. We had a pretty decent rain event in July, and then, of course, the major one that we saw in November. Those rain events, we get a huge volume of calls and just not able to respond to all of them within that gold range, and so that always brings that number down a little bit when we have these major rain events. If you took those rain events out of the equation, we're up to about 95%.
Have you looked at this with rain events historically?
Yes.
Like, rain events in 2015?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that pretty much correlates when we have these major rain events. I forgot what year it was, 1917, 19s, when we had the major flooding along the Meramek, and you'll see those numbers go down. Slide number five, maintenance-related building backups. The goal is to have less than 420 over the year, and we had 336 last year, so we were good there. Slide number six is the maintenance-related overflows. We refer to those as the dry weather overflows. 160 is the goal, less than 160 over the year, and we're at 153. The next slide, number seven. This is capacity-related building backups or basically overcharged mains during rain events, and this table shows, again, that during times that we have a lot of rain, then we have obviously more overcharged mains, and that was reflected with the 28.9 inches of rain we received in the second half of last year, and we had 1,963 overcharged mains. The average rainfall in St. Louis is about 34 inches per year, and last year, we had just under 51 inches, so we had a pretty wet year. You can see back in '23, we were about at that 34-inch level, and then prior to that, we were higher, significantly higher also, so. And there's no, no goals to report there. This is just information we have to report to the consent decree or to the EPA as part of our consent decree reporting.
Are we doing anything to manage those numbers, or are we just at the mercy of the rain?
With the overcharged mains, we're pretty much at mercy of the rain. Now, our I&amp;I projects can, you know, hopefully help those out over the, over time as well. Next page, slide number eight. This reports on the total constructed sanitary overflows that are still in our system, or SSOs, as we refer to them. At the end of 2024, we still have 19 in the system, and I know Rich's group is on track to have those removed by the established deadlines in the CD. Page number nine, the slide there, constructed overflow activations. This table, this table just shows how many of those SSOs that are still in the system, how many of those activated, which means they had flow go through them. We had 35 of those SSOs that were remaining that activated last year, and you can see back in 2015, we had 240 that activated, and as we remove these SSOs out of the system, those activations go down significantly, which is what we would expect and what we shoot for, obviously, so. And then the final slide here, that's just our scorecard. It shows those four compliance goals that we report on, the plant compliance, 100% compliance, we were just shy of that at 99.6%, the 90% response time, 87% maintenance-related backups. Our goal is to have less than one backup per 1,000 homes, and we're at .7. And then the maintenance-related overflows, less than 2.5 per 100 miles, and we're at 2.4, so. Any questions?
How often are the individual goals evaluated to see whether they are, we're setting the bar high enough?
These goals are called out in our CD.
Oh, okay. Makes it easy?
Yeah, yeah. The plant compliance goal, obviously, that's, that's a goal of any treatment plan, is to have 100% compliance, so. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, how are you today, Ms. Coleman?
I'm doing really well. How are you doing, Trustee Wilson?
Good to see you.
It's good to see you as well.
You have the floor.
Well, good morning, trustees. I'm going to be going over proposed ordinance 16564 for the civil service rules and regulations. This ordinance is before you because when we go through our, our union negotiations, we make changes to the collective bargaining agreements, which requires updates to the civil service rules. If you could go to the attachment in the back, I'm going to go over each of these changes. The changes were approved by the Civil Service Commission. I do have a lot of changes to go over, so I would just ask, if you've got any questions, please interrupt me, but I'll try to get through it as fast as I can. So if you look at the attachment, we're going to talk about Rule 1 definitions, Rule 1.58 suspension. We removed unpaid from that on page 10. If you look at Rule 4, applications and examination. If you look at Rule 4, applications and examinations, Rule 4.24, notice of examinations on page 18. Remove the posting paid advertisement in newspapers and periodicals, and replace time and place and manner of making applications with application deadline. Rule 4.5H, disqualification of applicants on page 21, replace tested positive on a substance abuse test to failed a substance abuse test. Rule 4.8A, method of rating minimum grades, page 24, added minimum eligibility requirements for all examinations shall, quote, "require at least a passing score of 60," as established by the Director of Human Resources. Rule 4.8B, consideration for lower job titles on page 25, replaced an applicant who fails to gain eligibility for unemployment, who fails to receive an offer of employment. Rule 6, certification and appointment. Rule 6.1, request to fill position on page 33, replace submit request with create a requisition to fill and replace on a form prescribed by the Director of Human Resources with, within the application tracking system. Rule 6.21A1, appointment through demotion or involuntary demotion on page 33, added .6 reference to Rule 11. Rule 6.2, appointment through reinstatement page 36, updated phrase with regular status to regular employee status. Rule 6.25G5, appointment through reinstatement on page 37, added phrases including after review of former employee's previous performance and any reason for which past disciplinary action was taken. Rule 6.2H, appointment from original appointment list on page 37, added that appointments from original appointment list must be made, quote, "in order of finally qualifying grade received from highest to lowest." Rule 7, probationary period, specifically Rule 7.6C, following direct removal of promotion or transfer probationary period on page 46, clarified that temporary reassigned employee shall have a period not to exceed 180 days to find a permanent position, starting from when the employee begins performing the temporary duties. Rule 8, employee conduct and relations, Rule 8.1, discrimination and favoritism prohibited on page 48, added pregnancy as a protected status. Rule 8.6, attendance and reports of absence on page 53, remove two references, remove two references to regularly from scheduled working hours and scheduled starting time. Rule 11, layoff procedures, separation and disciplinary action. Rule 11.6A2, suspension on page 65, updated the rule to clarify unpaid suspensions should not exceed 10 days. Added that an appointing authority may suspend an employee with pay pending investigation of charges against that employee. Rule 11.6B19, reasons for which disciplinary action may be taken on page 69, added a new subpart to Rule Causing or Committing Willful, Negligent, or Repeated Violation of Material Safety Standards and/or Practices Outlined in the District Safety Procedures and Guidelines Manual, or allowing any such violations to occur. There are some safety violations serious enough to warrant immediate suspension or dismissal without progressive discipline. Examples of serious safety violations include, but it's not limited to, trenching, ensuring violations, confined space entry violations, operating a district vehicle with an elevated boom, or failure to properly lock out, tag out energized equipment. Rule 13, compensation plan. Rule 13.4A, starting rate on initial employment on page 78, consolidated statements to include existing new schedules. Original appointment to any classified position with the current A1, A2, B1, B2, B3, and BT or C schedule shall normally be made within the first quartile or step of the salary range. Rule 13.4D, starting range of displaced employees on page 79, replace Schedule B with B1 and added B2, B3 to second paragraph. Replace Schedules A with A1 and added A2 to third paragraph. Rule 13.4E, point E, point 1, starting rate on restoration of original position on page 80, replace Schedule B with B1 and added B2, B3 to second paragraph. Replace Schedule A with A1 and added A2 to third paragraph. Rule 13.4, point E, point 2, starting rate on restoration of position lower than original position on page 80, replace B with B1 and added B2, B3 to second paragraph. Replace Schedule A with A1 and added A2 to third paragraph. Rule 13.4, point F, point 1, starting rate on recall of original position on page 81, replace Schedule B with B1 and added B2 to B3 to second paragraph. Replace Schedule A with A1 and added A2 to third paragraph. Rule 13.4, point F, point 2, starting rate on recall positions lower than original position on pages 81 through 82, replace Schedule B with B1 and added B2, B3 to second paragraph. Replace Schedule A with A1 and added A2 to third paragraph. Rule 13.4G, point 1, starting rate on promotion on page 82, replace with Schedule B with B1 and added B2 to B3. Rule 13.4, point G, point 2, starting rate on promotion on page 82, also replace Schedule A with A1 and added A2. Rule 13.5, point A, regular working hours on page 84, revised maximum work hours per day from 8 to 10, and added, depending on pay schedules and normal workday, the normal work week shall not exceed five days per week. Rule 13.5, point C, eligibility for overtime compensation, compulsory time for Schedule A, B, and BT employees on page 85, replaced pay Schedule A with A1, added A2, replace B2, BT, excuse me, with B3, and added pay Schedules A1, A2, and B3. Working a 40-hour work week may elect to receive compulsory time in lieu of overtime pay. Rule 13.5, point F, compensation for overtime marked on page 86, replace pay Schedule A with A1, and added and replace pay Schedule B with B1, added B2, remove phrase unless provided otherwise, and revise schedule established pursuant to Rule 13.5A, eight hours per day. Added reference to the extent permitted by Rules 13.5C and D. Rule 13.5H, callback pay on pages 86 through 87, replace Schedules A and B with A1 and B1, and added Schedules A2, B2, and B3. Clarified that pay Schedules A1, A2, B1, B2, B3, and BT, and Schedule C employees designated eligible overtime pay who regularly work 40 hours per week and are called back to the district facilities or work locations and shall be paid for hours at the appropriate rate for each instance thereafter. Added classified employees to pay Schedules A1, A2, B1, B2, B3, and BT, and the classified employees in Schedule C designated eligible overtime who work regular schedules less than 40 hours per week and are called back to the district facilities to work at locations to perform work or to render services outside of their regular working hours, shall be paid at the appropriate overtime rate for work performed in excess of 40 hours per week and each instance thereafter, paid a minimum sum equal to compensation for four hours at the appropriate rate of overtime. Also added, to the extent agreed upon with bargaining unit employees, those employees who provide callback services without traveling to district facilities or to work locations shall receive a minimum of one and a half, excuse me, of a half hour, of one and a half hours of regular pay as actually worked and overtime for any callback services provided in excess of 40 hours per week. We remove, we remove the phrase, the foregoing provision shall not apply to bargaining unit employees except to the extent agreed. Rule 13.5, point I, standby pay on page 87, updated from 8:00 a.m. to 6:30 a.m., clarified that standby assignments shall be compensated as provided in Rule 13.5, callback pay instead of 13.5E and F. Rule 13.6A regarding holidays on page 88, added June 10th, which is June 19th, listed to the list of holidays. Rule 13.6, point B, floating holidays on page 88, updated eligibility from an employee who has successfully completed their original probation period and replaced with, been employed by the district for 60 days from the date of hire pursuant to the district's floating holiday leave policy. Added that an employee terminated at the completion of their original probationary period is not entitled for compensation for floating holidays. Rule 13.6, point C, holiday observance on page 89, added that for employees with regular work schedules of Monday through Thursday, holidays which fall on a Friday shall be observed on the preceding Thursday, except for the Thanksgiving Friday holiday, which shall be observed on the preceding Wednesday. Rule 13.6D, compensation for observance of a holiday on page 89, remove the reference to daily overtime pay. Rule 13.6E, compensation for work performed on a holiday on page 89, replace Schedules A with Schedule A1 and added A2, A3, and replace pay Schedule B with Schedules B1, B2, and remove reference to holiday hours being paid credited towards daily overtime pay. Rule 14 regarding leave of absences on Rule 14.1, point B, point 1, computation of vacation leave, regular employees on page 92, updated eligibility from an employee who satisfactorily completes their original probation period and replaces it with complete 60 days of employment from their date of hire. Removed an employee may not use vacation time during the original probationary period. Removed the reference to payroll calendar year from accumulation chart. Rule 14.1C, vacation leave during military service on page 93, added that the vesting of accumulated vacation leave is subject to the lapse of one day of continued service following the employee's return from military leave under Rule 14.5. Remove requirements referenced in subpart paragraphs 1 and paragraphs 2, excuse me, I and I, double I or whatever. Rule 14.1D2, emergency vacation leave, page 94, added or 28 and 1/2 hours for employees who worked four days a week and 9.5 hours per day. Rule 14.1D4, vacation leave to supplement workers' compensation benefit or other paid leave on page 95, added that the appointing authority may grant vacation leave in an appropriate increment depending on the employee's regular working hours, and removed and revised schedule in the periodical marks. On Rule 14.1G, vacation sellback program on page 95, added a new rule. Vacation sellback program, classified employees shall be eligible for vacation sellback from the district in a manner that amounts described more particularly in the district's vacation leave and sellback policy. Rule 14.2, educational leave on page 96, clarified payments are, clarified payments made are in accordance with the district's tuition reimbursement policy. Rule 14.3, point B, point 3, sick leave exclusions from sick pay leave on page 100, replaced 90 days with 60 days. Rule 14.7, bereavement leave on page 101, replaced the maximum of 32 hours with a maximum of 38 hours based on work schedule, and added that leave may commence within 14 days of the funeral services. Rule 14.8, compassion leave on page 101, added new rule when a death occurs to an employee's brother-in-law, sister-in-law, uncle, niece, or nephew, one day of paid compensation leave will be allowed per calendar year. Usage shall be restricted to attendance at funeral services, and supporting documentation must be provided to receive pay. Rule 14.9, absence for voting on page 101, renumbered from 14.8 to 14.9. Rule 1410, absence for jury witness pay on page 102, renumbered from 14.9 to 14.10, and added, employees are required to immediately notify his or her supervisor upon receiving such subpoenas and shall submit proof. Rule 14.11, leave without pay on page 102, renumbered from 14.10 to 14.11. Rule 14.12, special leave on page 103, was renumbered from 14.11 to 14.12, and updated reference from Rule 1410 to 14.11. Rule 14.13, FMLA leave on pages 103 through 104, renumbered from 14.12 to 14.13, clarified that leave is unpaid under the federal, under the Family Medical Leave Act, and updated coverage period from per year to in a single 12-month period, clarified that the entitlement leave under a reason to is and in order to care for that child. Rule 14.4, administrative leave on page 104, renumbered from 14.13 to 14.14. Rule 14.15, domestic violence leave on page 105, added a new rule that employees who are victims of domestic violence or have, who have had family or household member who is a victim to domestic violence shall be entitled to 12 weeks of unpaid leave during any 12-month period as set forth in and to the extent allowed by the district's Victim Economy, Security, and Safety Act, the vessel leave policy. And Rule 14.16, bonding leave on page 105, was renumbered from 14.14 to 14.16, and added, employees are eligible for up to four weeks of paid bonding leave.
Can you tell me, what is, is bonding leave related to adoption?
Yes, bonding leave can be used for legal adoptions, yes. What other questions might you have, trustees?
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. You deserve the marathon award for that presentation.
I would agree. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. President, why don't you round us the day out?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Wilson. I just wanted to give a reminder to the board that at the end of the March board meeting, a new chairman and new vice chairman will need to be elected by the board. So the chairmanship will move to a city-appointed trustee, and the vice chairmanship will move to a county-appointed trustee. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next tentatively scheduled meeting is April 1st, 2025. Does anyone have anything for the good of the body? If not, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. A pleasure in my life, folks.
All right.
Have a good day, folks.
You too.